Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 24th, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. As a reminder, on March 12, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law to enable public bodies to carry out their responsibilities while adhering to public health recommendations regarding social distancing. The executive order relieves public bodies from the requirement in the open meeting law that meetings be conducted in a public place that's open and physically accessible to the public, provided that we provide provisions to ensure public access to the deliberations through adequate alternative means. In this case, we're utilizing Zoom, and we've listed information for joining the meeting on the school district website. Just another reminder, this meeting is being recorded both video and audio, and will be posted on the school district website. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the November 10th, 2020 meeting. I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Napparada?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Atomopoulos?
Yes.
Chair Sadiki?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone. I am going to begin my report by sharing a little bit about our personnel updates tonight. We have hired Carolyn Danielle as the Bartlett High School Administrative Assistant. We have hired Morgan Fersko as the long-term sub for special education at Bartlett High School. We have hired Margarita Nieves as our bilingual school liaison. Pleased to say she'll be starting on Monday. We're very happy about that. We're happy about all our hires. We've also hired Christopher Gallerino for tech support, Lee Nowalczek as tech support, and Martin Stefalogic as our custodian at Webster Middle School. I'm pleased to let you know that Susan Ricard, our Title I specialist over at Park Avenue Elementary School, has stepped up, and she will be filling in for the live Grade Four position over at Park Avenue Elementary School for the rest of the year. We want to give her a big shout out with this decision for her to take this long-term position. She is providing consistency. The students know her. She's been filling in for that classroom. She certainly has been a dynamo Grade Four teacher, so we're very pleased about her volunteering to do this for us during this situation. As you may or may not recall, one of our other Title I teachers over at Park Ave Elementary School also moved out of Title I into a long-term position for special education at the beginning of the year. So these shifts with Title I are making us sort of pause and take a thorough look at our Title I program. We definitely are in a different school model this year, and we need to look at what's going to work best for mediating and working with our students. So we're in the beginning phases of reassessing how our Title I program might look, and we will be keeping you up to date on that. We do have some open positions. Our long-term health position over at the high school is currently being filled with our long-term building substitute teacher, Mr. Barry Bertham. We have that posted. We are still looking for an interim dean over at Park Avenue Elementary School, and some interviews were occurring today for the 1O ELL position over at Webster Middle School. I'd like to welcome all of our new staff to the Webster Public Schools. Any questions on that before I proceed?
Sounds good so far.
Okay. I would like to just give you a hybrid update. We are one week and two days into our hybrid shift. I would like to report that there's a lot of mixed feelings going on, ranging from anxiety and fear with increasing numbers to joy. So that drastic range of emotions is happening for everyone. It was absolutely wonderful to see our students live in person, but this is sprinkled with layers and different variations of frustration with figuring out teaching and learning, how to teach live students at the same time with having remote students. I want to be clear that I'm very proud of the Webster Public School teachers and the earnest effort that everyone is putting in. Having been over at the middle school for a while, I've been able to see things firsthand, and I just want to remind everyone that modifying instructional practices takes time. And so I encourage people to have patience, ask questions, and understand that, as I've been saying all along, we're all on a learning curve. And every day, we learn something new. And every day, we see... I'm actually seeing, you know, teachers sharing great practices, and we're trying to figure this out together. So it was better than lots of us expected. My principals did hold voluntary staff meetings on Friday to gather feedback. I did send out a survey. But as I just want to leave you with, that there are... There are both, it's both joy and mixed feelings. So Webster's not alone in the difficult phase of trying to redesign what public education looks like, and we are in the midst of doing that as a team. I'm proud that we continue to work as a team across our district, and I can't praise our staff enough. I do want to share a little bit about what I've seen firsthand, being able to be at the Webster Middle School, and by no means, these things are most likely happening in the other buildings, but I was able to see it. I want to say that teaching with students in front of you and then having students on the camera is a challenging feat that I'm going to liken to running a game show. I have seen our teachers set up their technology resources, and some teachers have, you know, flown with this and are able to have their kids on screen that are at home while they have their lesson in front of them, while they also have their students in front of them. And in particular, I want to give a shout out to our Grade Five and Six teachers who really have mastered what they're doing. And we've been, I've been bragging like a mom because I've been in and out of the classrooms, and I'm amazed. I'm truly amazed. So I've been inviting other staff members in from other buildings to see, other principals to see, and to learn from each other. So again, the pride is just really loud and clear for what our teachers are doing. So I did want to share that. I also wanted to let you know that we are seeing different things in different buildings. And, you know, certainly, one thing that I will mention is our students were eager to come back. They were happy and compliant. And I'm speaking again from the middle school. Kept their masks on, tried their best with social distancing. But I am hearing that that may not be the case, in particular at the high school, that the social distancing piece may be really difficult for high school students who might be hanging out with each other outside the school. So that makes it hard at school. So for parents that are listening, or high school students that are listening, we really need you to help us with following those guidelines while you're in school. I have shared with you in your packet, I won't go into the details or read the numbers, but we have seen more students opting for remote-only learning. So there's been some shifts that I did want to make you aware of. Also, in my update, I just want to point out again that our October 1st numbers for enrollment were 1682. That's certainly down from last year, which was 1841, excuse me, students. But, you know, I also want to point out that across the state, there is a decrease in enrollment, a 3.9% decrease in enrollment. And primarily, we're seeing that decrease in pre-K and kindergarten across the state. And we are also seeing that here in Webster. So as we enter the FY21 budget, it's important to take a look at what our October 1st numbers are. And we are entering FY22, I'm sorry, FY22 budget. I have some good news to share with you. We are one of 134 districts that have been accepted into the pilot phase of the Abbott-Bionox Now Rapid Testing for schools. This is a rapid testing kit that will be distributed. There are about 2 million test kits that are going across Massachusetts. It's a 15-minute FDA-approved rapid test. Our nurses have been working with this on me, and they've completed the training. There will, this will require parent and guardian consent forms, which we're still waiting for, from the Department of Education and Department of Public Health. It is a rapid antigen test. It's important for anyone listening that these tests are not, will only be given when somebody is showing symptoms, and it's to capture the first early stages of infection. Anyone who takes one will also be recommended to take the PCR test in addition to these results. So I'm pleased about that, and I think a lot of our staff are also pleased that we'll have access to that soon. We're expecting that to come in December at some point. Any questions before I move on?
With the chair?
Yes, Mrs. Napparada?
I just had a question about the enrollment numbers. Is there any discussion at the state level to use the enrollment data from 2019 versus penalizing districts financially?
Yes, there is some, from what I've heard, there is some discussion about using the previous enrollment numbers, but I don't have any final details on that. Yes?
Thank you.
Any other questions? I feel like I'm looking up. All right, I'm going to keep going. I would just like to give you an update from the Southern Western County Educational Collaborative. As you know, I'm on the board there. Webster at this time has 12 students there. Their annual report is being shared with you through our school committee packet. Like most schools, they are also seeing a decrease in their enrollment. They are down about 113 students, and there are, of course, financial implications for that. The good news for them is that they have a reserve that they can go to, but that's certainly not a sustainable plan. So their report is, annual report is included in the packet for your review, as is the Central Mass Collaborative update. At this point, Webster has three students in their programs. They are also seeing a decrease in enrollment with financial implications on that. Recently, we had their FY20 audit, and the results were very good. There was no management letter given, but there's ongoing recommendations to have a written set of accounting procedures and increase staff for the business office for internal controls. Their annual report is included on that. As I go down my list for other updates, I'm pleased to let you know that Desi reviews our student information system, and they look to see if we are proportionately identifying special education students correctly. They, I'm pleased to report, we have not been identified as a district that is having a significant disproportionality by race or ethnicity in our special education process. And I'm also pleased to let you know that we are rounding up the completion of giving out the $10,000 worth of food vouchers that we received from the grant that I had written for Mahfri. These food vouchers are very helpful to our families. And I'm also pleased to let you know that recently, this week, the Greek Orthodox Church has donated food baskets and price sharper cards and turkeys to both Park Avenue and Webster Middle School. Due to their late date of it coming in, we will put it on the next agenda so you can officially accept their donation. I have also included a snapshot that we've been given, and we've gotten a lot of positive feedback. About our COVID weekly dashboard is in your school committee packets to keep our families and staff informed on our cases. I think what I'm going to say about that is what I've been saying. It's not just the positive cases that impact us. It's the confirmed close contacts which create absences for both students and staff. I just will quickly review that we do have a staffing shortage emergency plan ready to go should there not be enough staff in a building. Principals will be notifying the superintendent and the business manager very early in the morning, and the buses will be contacted, and principals will send out a one-call when they don't have enough staff to let either Cohort A or Cohort B know that it will be a remote learning day. On these days, whenever that happens, Cohort C will still come into school, and so will our staff. And that concludes my report. But before I sign off, I would just like to wish everyone a happy and healthy and safe Thanksgiving, and ask that everyone try to be mindful of the travel guidelines that are in place in Massachusetts, and that we return to school on November 30th, safe and healthy and ready to continue teaching and learning in a new environment.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan, and thank you for your tireless efforts at creatively meeting the needs of our students, our families, our district, whether it be, you know, writing a grant or finding opportunities for us to administer tests, or, you know, there's always something new that's coming up that you're bringing to us, that you've found a way to get food for families, or... So it's much appreciated. I know it goes a long way, especially this year of all years.
Thank you. It's a team effort in our district.
We're thankful for that. So thank you for your update. The next item on the agenda is the business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
You're unmuted. It's starting to click after you start talking for a second. He's like, oh darn, I didn't unclick the button. Thank you, and good evening, everybody. First item on my agenda is the school building committee update. I am happy to say that on November 17th, Dr. Gogan, myself, and Ted Atlas had participated in the designer selection panel at the MSBA. What we are doing is we were reviewing RFS received for architects. There were 10 received, 10 very qualified candidates. After some discussion, we narrowed it down to three. We will be doing interviews of those three candidates to come out with a top candidate on December 1st. So we will be back at it again, the three of us with the panel, going through the interview process and then bringing a recommendation back to the building committee, which will then come to the school committee for approval. So that process is moving right along, and we are really pleased with the high-quality candidates that submitted proposals. It's very encouraging. Any questions on that? Next item is transportation update. So as Dr. Gogan said earlier in the meeting, as we shifted into hybrid mode, we had more students taking the buses. I've been trying to keep you updated as to our numbers and how that was looking. As you know, the enrollment at the high school has kind of dropped, so our space and our capacity on the buses is remaining good for the Webster Middle School and the high school. We are running with no issues there. At the park ave, buses are a little fuller there. We have three buses right now that two of them are at capacity. Our capacity is 26 seats or rows taken, and one of them is overcapacity at 27. I haven't changed any of the routes yet because even though on the books I have 27 students, we haven't had 27 kids on the bus yet. Knowing it was the first week of hybrid, you know, I think parents chose to drive their kids to school maybe the first day, first couple of days to see how it goes. There's been a lot of kids, some coming in, some going out. So there's been a lot of swapping. So we figured we'd let it go for a week or two, see if we run into any problems. We haven't yet with the buses that, on paper, that are looking like they're at capacity. We've had enough seats to manage. So I figure after a couple of weeks, then we'll start addressing and calling again the parents who signed up and are taking seats that maybe are not utilizing the bus and won't be needing that service. So we're keeping a close eye on it, but right now, it has been running very smoothly. And I just wanted to take a moment to talk also about the hybrid, you know, as it regards to transportation. But overall, it has been an interesting week, and things have gone pretty well. And the reason for that is Dr. Gogan is always giving credit to the team, credit to the staff, credit to the custodians, credit to the bus drivers, credit to the teachers, credit to the cafeteria. But she's not taking on much of that credit for herself. So we wouldn't be where we were if we didn't have that strong leadership in planning. Nobody expected this to go 100% perfect. Key to strong leadership is saying, okay, things are going to go wrong. Let's debrief after situations. What can we do to make it better the next time? And that is constant and ongoing here. There isn't a day that goes by that we are not debriefing and talking as a group to say, what can we do better? So I just, I think, and I think staff would agree that overall, this has been a very successful first week. And the reason I think that is because of the protocols and the processes that we have in place. And that was done by the leadership of Dr. Gogan. So I just think she deserves a shout out herself for the hard work. I know I've talked to her at 5:30 in the morning. I've talked to her at 10 o'clock at night. She's not sleeping. In between those times, she's up working. She's up working at midnight, making sure and taking on this heavy weight of trying to keep us all safe, keep us all doing the best we can and making sure we have those protocols in place. So I just wanted to give her a special shout out and say thank you. You know, we're working hard every day, but she's right there in it with us. So we appreciate that. So I just wanted to give her that shout out.
Thank you, Monique.
You're welcome. Any questions about transportation? Or anything? Nope. Okay, next item is the FY21 budget update. First, I wanted to apologize. I typically try to send out quarterly reports, and it just dawned on me, I haven't done that for you yet this year, to review our ongoing FY21 budget. So for next school committee meeting, I will have a quarterly report done for you guys. I will also have an update on food service because we're trying to keep a close eye on that. As you know, the state is still working through the FY21 budget. They are in the Senate Ways and Means right now. There is a, you know, still projecting an increase over what we received in Chapter 70 last year. So our budget is working off a level funded Chapter 70. That's what we approved on. So if it comes in as an increase, the tax rates are already set, so I don't know what that means for the budget overall, seeing we do have an approved budget. But I will have those discussions with the town, and we will keep you up to date on that. And I will make sure that you have an up-to-date budget report for the next meeting. And I also wanted to inform families that there is a change in our meal delivery for next week. With our bulk meals, we are going to be delivering meals on or having pickup on Tuesday and Thursday, December 1st and 3rd. Typically, we've been doing Mondays and Thursdays, but when we have a long weekend like this, we cannot get our milk delivery in time in order to process and get it all ready for Monday. So we have to move that delivery to a Tuesday and Thursday next week. So I just wanted to make sure families were very aware of that. And I believe that concludes my report. Oh, I forgot one important thing on transportation. It's chilly outside, and it's cold. And under the rags, we have to keep the windows down. So, you know, I've just, I've gotten a couple of calls from parents wondering why we have to keep the windows open. It's cold on the bus, their child is cold. The transportation company did have the windows down all the way. I gave them permission to do like every other window, two to three inches to keep the airflow because we have to have that constant airflow on a bus. But if you have all those windows down and some of those buses are jumping on the highway, it's cold in those buses, and the wind is whipping. So I just want to make sure families know that we have to buy rags, keep windows open, keep air circulating on the bus. It's important to keep the kids healthy and safe. But, you know, bundle them up a little bit, make sure they have their hats, their coats, and their gloves, a scarf, so that, you know, it's not that cold of a ride to school. We're doing the best we can with that. So I just wanted to make sure I inform families of that. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli, and thank you for your comments regarding Dr. Gogan's efforts. I second them and sincerely appreciate the leadership that we've had, really even before this crisis occurred, but in particular, in the last eight or nine months. So thank you. The next item on the agenda is the principal report. Joining us this evening is Mrs. Parmley from Park Avenue Elementary School. Good evening, Mrs. Parmley.
Good evening. How is everybody tonight? Well, we are here, and I have to say that we are doing okay at Park Avenue School. We held our virtual parent-teacher conferences on November 10th and 12th with strong attendance from our families. We also held an information night around the hybrid model that same evening. And then on November 16th, Park Avenue launched its hybrid model successfully as we welcome back our polar bears into the building. Staff and students alike are navigating this new shift as they are taking on each new learning curve, one day at a time. And I have to say, our students have been doing amazing following the safety protocols beautifully, and our staff are doing an amazing job teaching both our remote learners and our in-person learners, which can be extremely challenging as you get down to the younger grades especially. When I walk into a kindergarten room and see eight in-person and several on, you know, on camera, I have to give those teachers kudos of the work that they're doing as they try to keep everybody engaged at the youngest level. Our unified art teachers, I just wanted to give them a shout out tonight because just like the classroom teachers, they are being extremely creative and engaging students. They have not missed a beat. They also have done their own car line events and brought materials to the families. And if you could watch them, so we have one gym teacher doing all the live. We've got one teacher doing the remote. We've got Mrs. Jeffers doing STEAM. We've got technology going on. We've got our sax doing the social-emotional learning. We've got our new music teacher, Jenna Johnson, just doing a fabulous job. Our art teacher, Mrs. Katron. I mean, I cannot tell you enough of how much fun that these students are having, and they look forward to those UA times because these teachers are just giving it all they've got. So, you know, it was just really heartwarming to welcome everybody back into the building, from getting off the buses to the car lines. We're learning a little bit each day. We've had to make lots of changes each day. We're definitely receiving feedback from staff and trying to make those changes so that we get a little bit better each day at what we're doing. So kudos to my staff by far. I'm just so proud of them. But as I close, I just wanted to thank a few people. My, first of all, my assistant principal, Mrs. Deb Zablocky, my right-hand, our custodians, our school nurses, our administrative assistants. All of them have just put so much thought and time and attention to detail into all the specifics. So not only did we launch our first week, but we also had a fire drill the first week. And I got to tell you, the kids and the staff rocked it. They were amazing. They did not hesitate. They knew what they needed to do. The teachers had done everything that they were supposed to do to get them ready in just a very short amount of time, and it just went very well. So I'm just really proud of what has happened at Park Avenue, and kudos to the staff at PAE. Way to go, polar bears.
Thank you, Mrs. Parmley. The next item, does anyone have any questions or comments for Mrs. Parmley, by the way, before we move on? Well, thank you and thank you to your team. You know, I've got children at Park Avenue and I know that they're jazzed to be in the building. And all that you said, you know, the, the UA time, they're enjoying every minute of it. So thank you to you and the whole team.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the student representative update. Vivian Paplowski, good evening, Vivian.
So our desk's first quarter report cards were sent home this weekend. And National Honor Society decisions also came out for the students who had applied. There was a Nichols Honors Academy Zoom meeting held on Wednesday, November eighteenth. For all of the NHA members. And it went really well. It was great for the freshmen who had really found to have the experience with the shutdowns. And for athletics, the fall sport season ended. The boys and girls soccer teams played Auburn on Wednesday, November eleventh, Oxford Monday, November sixteenth, and also on Wednesday, November eighteenth. And boys and girls cross country participated in their political pod championship on Tuesday, November seventeenth. And then they faced Uxbridge on Thursday, November nineteenth. And just for us to update, the majority of students are glad to be back in the hybrid model. But as Dr. Gogan mentioned, there have been some problems in the hallways with the social distancing guidelines. So I just think it's important to remind students that we want to stay in hybrid, that we have to make sure we're doing everything we can to make it a safe environment. The teachers have been doing a great job dealing with both the remote and in-person students and all of the students with hard medication during this. And that's my report for tonight.
Thank you, Vivian. Any questions or comments for Vivian? I really appreciate your update and the perspective that you share about what it's like to actually be in the building as a student. It's really valuable. The next item on the agenda under old business is the Real Madrid sports update. Is this Dr. Gogan?
Yes, we have a couple of sports updates. And I'm going to recommend that we table the conversation on sports until we have some more detailed information. But I can give you a brief update on the Real Madrid. We had applied for a grant to start a substantially small group sports for basketball and soccer for ELL students. And due to COVID, we've not received the grant or been able to do the sports. We are in the process of gathering the MIAA recommendations. Our athletic director and principal have a meeting actually tonight with other athletic directors and principals. I have a meeting next week with superintendents related to the starting of basketball. MIAA have come out with some guidelines. The guidelines may not be in alignment with the DPH. But our hope is that we can have a more information to present a solid plan to you at the next school committee meeting. So in conjunction with basketball, starting with regular basketball, starting, our plan was to have the Real Madrid basketball season start for the ELL students. So I, I, I think we need to have some more information to have a clear plan to present to you. But we're on it, just like everything else.
Sure you are. So, so it sounds like we need some more information before we can really dig into this discussion. So the next time we get together, we'll be able to unpack all the information that you learned tonight and, and next week?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't see anything under new business here on our agenda. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the review, transfer, signing of warrants, bills, payroll and vouchers. We did receive a warrant this week. Does anyone have any questions about that? Mrs. Perangeli, you'll be looking for the usual suspects?
Yes, please, payroll. And actually, Ms. Malat already came in and signed this warrant, but I think we'll have another one ready. Our schedule is a little off from normal. But you'll definitely get a text from me when we're ready.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laura, would you please pull the committee?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Nefarada?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopoulos?
Yes.
And Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. Good night, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Stay safe.